Hello again, everyone, and welcome to another Inside Lowell Podcast. I'm your host Teddy Panos coming here from the Wellpoint Studios here in beautiful rainy downtown Lowell on this Thursday, October 30th. Today, we are going to give you an inside view of District Seven, or more specifically, the candidates who are on the ballot vying to be the district representative for District Seven here in Lowell, also known as the Acre District. They've been kind enough to join us here in the Wellpoint Studios and we appreciate their time here as we are literally now five days away from Election Day. The long road is almost over for both of you. So I thank you for being here. First, to to the left of our monitors, Sidney Liang, welcome again Sidney, good to have you here.
Hello.
Are you ready for the for this to be over?
Oh, yeah, 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 I think so. It's been fun. Oh, you know, it's been fun. All right. It's got interesting.
Paul Ratayem is here as well. Paul, good to have you with us in the Wellpoint Studios again as well.
Thank you Ted for having me.
It's it's my pleasure and I appreciate both of you agreeing, especially after I'm sure that this is probably the last thing you want to be doing. You've done a number of these, but we appreciate you giving our audience and the voters of Lowell one more opportunity to hear where you stand on the issues and and highlight your position. So our format will follow the format as all of our other debates do. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute opening and a one-minute closing statement. We will rotate the order of who goes first and whatnot. You'll each be asked the same questions and you'll each have an opportunity to address the same questions again in rotating alphabetical order. If one of you is asked, if one of you is mentioned in your opponent's answer specifically criticized or whatnot, and you feel the need to offer rebuttal, just signal me, please let me know and we'll we'll get to that as well and try to have a little back and forth. We're okay with that. I will let you know that one of the questions is tailored a little bit differently. You're both basically getting the same question, but it's worded a little bit differently based on the fact that Paul is the incumbent councillor who's been serving in office and Sidney is the challenger who has not yet served in office yet, but would like to have an opportunity to. So with that, let's get to our opening statements and we'll start with you first, Mr. Sidney Liang.
Thank you Teddy. And thank you to everybody who's watching and thank you, Boratah, that agreed today because it's raining outside. Excuse me, my 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 tone's a little bit different. And as I'm speaking, I just want also to thank those that I put signs in their yards and and other places that they allowed me to do. Thank you so much. My name is Sidney Liang. I have been a Lowell resident, especially in the Acre since 1987. I'm a Cambodian, former Cambodian refugee who's been here since 1983. And throughout my life, I've been an advocate for the community for over 30 years through radio, TV, especially those that are bilingual, bicultural, and would like to assimilate into the the community. And good or bad, I've been working here for quite some time. I work with the different stakeholders, city councillors, City Hall and many non-profit organizations as well. And I'm like to try and see if I can be a city councillor this time. And you know, hopefully, you know, the the community will support me and allow me to to have a seat at the table.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Liang. Mr. Yen.
Thank you Teddy. I'd like to use this opportunity to tell our voters who Paul Ratayem is. At the end of the Vietnam War in 1975, I had I left Cambodia. All my family were killed during the killing field of Cambodia. So later I was adopted, taken in by American missionary family in San Bernardino, California. On the weekend, I went down to Long Beach, California to serve to help Cambodian refugee newly arrival families in Long Beach, California. In 1981, I received a call from Boston area saying that they need someone to work with Cambodian refugees who are arriving in the greater Boston area. So without hesitant, I packed my bag and drove across the country to Massachusetts without knowing how cold Massachusetts is. So I am because I'm dedicating to to help. So my job arriving here in Boston in 1981, I met family at the Logan Airport. I put them in apartment that I secure before their arrival, register kids for school and the parent to to English class and job training. I back and then 1983, 84, I was fortunate to be hired to work with the Executive Office of Public Safety with the state to help the community at large throughout the Commonwealth who has number of refugees in their community, including Lowell, Lynn, Riviera Chelsea. So and then later on, I worked in the Attorney General's Office in the Civil Rights Division. In 1981, I got a job offer here in Lowell, working with the local bank, Lowell Institution for Saving, to help Cambodian to learn how to use banking, purchase home, start new businesses. And that's how I got started. And then my work with the community started back in 81 and I'm very proud. And the reason I want to continue be on the council, I've been on the council for four years is that I want to have a voice at the table making the decision because oftentimes City Hall making decision that has a negative impact on the Southeast Asian community. And that's the reason why I ran three times, 2015, 2017. I got killed because I'm the the I didn't support downtown, so I'm a college guy. So 2019, I take a year off and 2021, when the voting system changed, I decided to throw my hat in. I was fortunate to have an opportunity to serve since 2022. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We now begin the question and answer portion of our debate and we'll start with you. First question to you, Mr. Yen. And I, as I did this morning with the District Eight debate, I'm going to give credit to my friend Marty Lorrie, who asked this at a debate on the radio. And it reminded me, one of the iconic debate lines in 1980 was delivered by then challenger Ronald Reagan against incumbent President Jimmy Carter. And he asked the audience, are you better off today than you were four years ago? He said, that's the that's the question to ask when you go into the voting booth. So let me ask you, are you are you, is Lowell better off today than it was two years ago when the most recent council term started? Mr. Yen.
The answer to that question, it depend on are you talking about local or national? To me, the the situation right now to do to to inflation and all that, people are struggling because the inflation and also the tariff war in other country. Now the food prices have gone up to about 6% compared to last year and everything else the same. The city of Lowell, we are fortunate in a way that other program that support the the low-income family, including the food bank, including other an organization that support. And the city had played a big role in it in supporting with the CDBG fund with the other funding to support these nonprofit organization, including the food bank, including the CTI, CBA, including Boys and Girls Club to provide safe places. In addition, the city provide a recovering home like the CBA 555 Merrimack Street. It's a 21 unit for people who recover and try to get back to normal life by learning to live on their own. And also to CTI Women's Recovery on Summer Street. And the city invests in other like the COP, helping people who has some issue with drug use, all of that, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Liang.
I think that it's not better. And I think also just the the current environment nationally or locally is not really good for the the community. And especially the Acre where a lot of minorities are living and also are getting the brunt of all the national and also local, I guess, problems that's happening. Not just me, I mean locally, I'm just talking within the Acre area, that a lot of people are struggling and especially, of course, the cost of living like Bonja said and housing. Once you have all of that, mental health is probably the top issues as well within the Acre community. And financial health, it basically worsened just over a year ago, meaning that it's rising from 15 to 31%, meaning that we we are we're having a lot of trouble within our neighborhoods. And additionally, 33% of the, I guess, the Acre residents among those that took the survey with the the Greater Lowell Health Alliance also stated that, you know, one-third of the neighbors cannot afford their medication and their healthcare. So that's a lot of our neighbors that are really struggling with just healthcare alone. And additionally, now, you know, we know that pharmacy, CBS or Walgreen that used to be there is no longer there anymore. So we are getting worse and worse every day. And so I'm assuming that we are struggling even more now as we speak. And we're looking to City Hall and other key stakeholder to just maybe help us move forward a little bit. And the pain is, you know, basically is too much for the for those that in the Acre community right now.
Okay, thank you both. Next question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Liang. UMass Lowell Chancellor Julie Chen appeared before the City Council this past Tuesday night, updating everyone on the progress of the Link Project Lowell Innovation Network Corridor. Generally, the university's growth is seen as a good thing by most people in the city. But there are pockets of people who live in Lowell and I hear it a lot in the Acre that are critical about that expansion, saying it is changing their neighborhood and specifically it's pricing them out of their neighborhood. It's getting too expensive to live in that neighborhood. Do you believe UMass Lowell's expansion is a key part of the city's growth? Or does it come at the expense of the Acre and the residents who live there?
I think it's both. I mean, when you are right now struggling with the cost of living, struggling to take care of your family and you have a company or you have the university who's a really, you know, big, you know, key player in the city. And I'm not saying neglect, but I want to the city to pay attention more to the Acre residents. You have the South Campus right next door. You have a lot of residents who are college students living within the 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 community, the neighbors itself. So I need more, not connection, but benefit from the university into the Acre community. Provide, you know, additional job for the local residents. And you're right, it is pricey, you know, to live in the Acre at this point. And and at the same time, we are struggling within. It's almost like a pocket of of issues, but at the same time, you can't move anywhere except to move out of there. You can't move out, you know, from your neighborhood. I I'm a fighter. I don't want to run away from my home that I've been there for a long time. And everything else within the neighbor is getting really pricey and it's, you know, it's suffocating to those who are poor within the neighborhood. And right now, it is, you know, frustrating. Of course, it's the kids are growing out there as well. And you have this corridor that's more not benefiting too much for the Acre community or, you know, the Cambodia Town community. So it's almost like you're dividing community much more than before.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Yen, to you.
Thank you for the questions and yes, it was a exciting presentation by Chancellor Chen. When I was running in 2021, I walked the neighborhood and same like recent today too. The concern of the increase of the UMass Lowell, particularly in the parking. I I didn't hear so much of the housing portion of it. But people live on Bower Street, the gentleman who lived on Bower Street, almost the end to Salem. And the UMass Lowell has a big parking lot in the back. It used to be where a shop gas station used to be and a beautiful, beautiful parking lot. However, the student who live on that Bower Street park along, she take up all the parking lot, parking space that residents used to park. So they asked me, why can't UMass Lowell open that garage? You know, at night, particularly in the winter time, when we have snowstorm to allow resident to park there. So I met with Chancellor Chen when she presented the Link Project. And I brought up a few times and she said, other location, but except that one, like a South Campus parking garage, the university open it up. So that's being said, yes, the it's it's, I call it a growing pain. And I see it's a positive, but we need to go through that growing pain. The UMass Lowell Link Project will create additional housing to alleviate some of the housing that will be pressure on the resident who live here forever. So part of the project is estimate about 500 housing unit that will be built along the campus part of it. So in addition to that, there's a permanent job that the C, the 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 Link Project will provide, you know, to the city. In addition to that, the housing will provide not just the home, but also the tax base to the city of Lowell that we needed. These tax base will help the city to reduce the tax burden on the local resident right now. So this is the 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 positive size of the of the the progress in the Link Project. So if I may add, that Link Project, it worked well with the city of Lowell from Rana City. It's part of the GEM plus now. I see both running as a as a train track together that provide additional development, money coming to the city, more development, meaning the more taxes base for the city, reduce the burden of the tax on homeowners who are currently live in the city of Lowell all their lives. So this is the positive change that I see.
Okay, thank you. Next question and we'll start with you, Mr. Yen. Going back to the change to district representation in 2021, I've spoken with a number of people in the Hispanic community who feel they got cut out of the process, the district representation process, especially because of the way the Acre lines were specifically drawn. What would you say to those members, the members of that Hispanic community? I believe about 25% of the of the residents of the the Acre, what we think of as the Acre is Hispanic or list themselves as Hispanic. What would you say to those folks who feel they aren't being represented either on the City Council or on the school committee? Mr. Yen, we'll start with you.
Thank you for the question. Monday night, I had an opportunity to to go to a Latino podcast. And and we talked about the Latino community. We talked about the Latino registered voter who did not go out to vote. And we talked about, you know, in order for you to get the attention of the politician establishment, Latino community need to come out to vote. And this is your time to express that. And I use the opportunity to let them know that Asian, Cambodian, Southeast Asian registered voter are less than the Latino population. However, the Southeast Asian voters come together and elected not just one, but three Cambodian-American councillor representing the community in at the City Hall, including the Acre where there's a large population. I spoke to a lot of them. I have been taken upon myself to walk in where behind the City Hall Moody Street. You talked about then you Adam Street, talk about Father Morrison's, all of that Latino housing project. I walk and I speak with them and I encourage them to get out. So I'm not sure, I did not hear what you said about they feel like the, you know, gerrymandering of the district. It's I I don't hear that. But, you know, to them, it's just that we do not have anyone to speak on behalf of them. But this time around, they reach out and this past Tuesday, we have Latino parent who came to the council, talked about the violence, talked about the bullies at the high school and all of that. And all of the councillors support them. And I will also encourage them to come forward and I explain to them, this is how you use your power, voting power.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Liang.
Thank you. I asked that at this during this election to support me. You know, hopefully in the future, you'll have a Latino or somebody from Hispanic community sit at the City Hall. Unfortunately, right now, District Seven, you have to choose between two of us. And, you know, hopefully, I, you know, I will, I I can, you know, hopefully, I can encourage you and to to boost up and and support a strong candidate that, you know, Hispanic or Latino. Because I believe that the person from your own culture, from your own community can understand you more than us. You can tell us the problem, we can help you. But at the same time, we can only help as much because you have to feel the issues. You have to understand the problem. You have to know where it come from, you know, the root cause of the problem. And while I can ask for your vote and help you through your struggle and maybe improving your life, I want to see your kids, I want to see your children to sit at the City Hall table and chairs, not just to vote for somebody, but to be there and, you know, representing your community. And for now, please vote for me. And 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 I will go to your community. I will, you know, show what I do for a living. I will show you how to go through the process. It's painful. It's not, you know, a really smooth process, but that's a good thing. The challenges and the barriers that will overcome. But I believe that you'll you'll be there one day, but just for now, vote for me.
Okay, I'm going to do a brief follow-up on this because I I understand as as new groups come to the city, there have been clashes and I know that there were at one time with the Southeast Asian community and the Latino community, the Greek community and the Irish community way back in the turn of the twice. You could probably sit there, but but there was one flashpoint that popped up a few years ago that brought that back, I think, and that was Clemente slash Palin Park. If if you're on sitting on the council next year and a motion is brought forward next term to change the name of Clemente Park to Palin Park, would you support that motion? And it's a follow-up, so I'll continue with you, Mr. Yen.
Thank you for the question and I had been, I was not on the council at the time, but I knew about it. I heard about it. I'm working since my the past four years with the Latino community very closely. And I did raise the raise the the point of, you know, moving Clemente Park to the North Common. And then turning the Clemente Park right now, all Cambodian we know is Palin Park. So if that the situation, that's what the name was going to be by Cambodian people at the Clemente Park currently become a Palin Park. And I spoke with a number of Latino, they are receptive. However, they said that whoever filed the motion did not do their homework, did not reach out to both Latino and the Cambodian, only the Cambodian side of the population. So if I were to, and I've been thinking about that for a long time, that's the reason why I I kind of start talking with them. So I speak with different group. As you know, Latino is diverse as Asian population. You have, you know, you have the largest Puerto Rican, you have Dominican and you have El Salvadoran and all that. They don't really get along. We Cambodian, we we just have politics back home as a as something to get over. You know, I'm not sure it's good or bad, but at least some of it, including myself, overcome that. And I don't really, because my kids grew up here, this is my country now. This is my kids' country, my create homeland. So I'm trying to work to make this community stronger, Cambodian community stronger. When stronger Cambodian here is helping back home as well. And I'm talking to Latino about the same kind of concept and they are really receptive. We can play all of this behind the background. If everything all consensus together and then we make public motion to to exchange it. And they, the Latino agree that if we can have the North Common now being renovated, it's almost a ribbon cutting, $1.17 million that the city expand the ball field with the bathroom and concession stand, we will have the ribbon cutting soon. So that become Clemente Park. Right now, it's they use it behind the Butler School, Clemente, Cumentis, something name of the park there for for Clemente team to play. However, it's most of the kid live in the project, they have to cross Fletcher Street and then School Street to go to that ball field. So this is, this is, I'm working on it behind the scene currently.
So to be clear, what you're hoping to do is to rename it, the the park up in the lower Highlands as it's considered to Palin Park, but yes, in Cambodia Town, but to rename North Common Clemente Park. What if there's, what if there's large opposition from the Hispanic community? Would you still go forward with that?
No, I would not. I would listen to the community, particularly it Latino. You know, you have Dominican and you have Puerto Rican. They are made of largest group in the in my district, District Seven. So I'm, we're listening to them and then I willing to listen. If they don't agree, I will not put that forward. Number, number, let me also mention that I file a motion to ask the city work with Latino community to name a street or a section of the Acre. It's a Latino town or whatever Latino community call, want to call it, similar to we call Cambodia Town. Because there's a lot cultural and arts, you know, in the Acre where Latino population grow living. And I would like to have that center, even though they don't have business center like in Cambodia Town. But you talk about music, about arts and food, the same thing in that section of the the Acre. You know, I also have in mind, they called Decatur Way, a lot of Latino arts along that already maybe make a motion to rename the street instead, Decatur Way, something that Latino population resident can agree upon.
Okay, Mr. Liang, would you support a motion to change the name of the park?
They, I have to say that we respect the history of the Clemente Park. And it should have that history at Clemente Park. But at the same time, I would ask as well to maybe name it like Palin Clemente Park. Just because I don't like what I see nationally, history being destroyed. Good or bad, there's history in informing the park, there's a story to how the park was formation in in a way that, and we should preserve that. And and there's a reason why they choose that location. But as the story goes, you know, there's, you know, new arrival into the city. There's newcomers into the city and at the same time, there's Cambodian communities right now that's using the park, taking care of the park, you know, preserving the park and doing all that. And I think there should be a consideration and and talk to the people who's are actually the maybe the the founder of the park and how how do we integrate this, Palin Clemente and have a statue or a history of where it was, you know, founded from. But right now, at the present time, the park is being used by a lot of Cambodian American, Cambodian community, Cambodian cultures happening in there. So I I think it's probably befitting to somehow integrate that in term into the new arrival, the new residents that's actually using the park. And I, you know, I'm the North Common Park, I'm not touching that right now. So we'll we'll leave that there and I'm not also touching the the Decatur Way because there's also stories of the Decatur Ways and how it's just formed and how it's made. So right now, the question is about the Palin Clemente Park. So that's how I'm going to just introduce it.
So you would you would be in favor of using both names, incorporating both names into the same park?
Yes, to preserve the history, the the past and the present, I think it's probably befitting to add those two together and somehow preserve the history within the park and by engraving something or have a statue or or something that we can work together with the Latino community or, you know, other community that's probably using the park and look into the future and how that park being used. Because again, I don't like history being destroyed or taken away. There's a reason for everything and it should be kept or should be remembered.
Okay, Mr. Yen, you wanted a quick second?
No, a quick second if I may. Clemente Park is not the original name. The original name that I've read in the history, it used to be called Washington Park. The gentleman who owned the piece of land where the Boys and Girls Club at the park is, he create a ball field. And then he then tried to get all different player to come so he can sell the ticket. And he did a good job a few years and then the the interest of the baseball kind of died down. And then we have the famous Clemente ball player. And then he would rename that so that it would attract more people to the ball field due to the fact that Mr. Clemente is, you know, is a is a famous ball player. And that's how the name carry on till today. So I just want to interject the history. So I just wanna interject the history of the Clemente, thank you.
Right, no, no, I mean, it it's fine, the question was about the Palin and the Clemente. I did not wanna go to the history of what's going on, we only have a few minutes.
I don't have any commercial. The genius of the podcast, but we will move on to the next question and we'll start with you, Mr. Liang. The next budget is shaping up to be one that includes a pretty big tax increase. According to the manager's office, one point six percent tax increase is needed alone just for the Lowell High School project. You throw in all the other expected costs and even if by some miracle you were able to keep it at a two and a half percent increase again. As I think was the number this year, you're looking at four plus percent increase in the taxes. Is an increase of that size acceptable to you in the next budget? And if not, can you tell me an area where you would look to specifically reduce or cut spending? So that you could keep that increase as low as possible for the residents who, if you talk to pretty much ninety percent of the residents. Will tell you, we don't wanna pay more property taxes.
So I, I've been working with budgeting for a long time throughout my my work at the health center and at the different capacity. Now, I don't have the luxury of being incumbent, looking into the, you know, the the budget. And 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 talking with the, you know, the the, I guess, the CFO. But I will have to look deeper into the budget. Because I don't like these increases keep getting creeping for whatever reason excuses they make. Just keep ballooning up every single year. And as you can see at the beginning of the show, the people are suffering and we keep adding up. So where's your feeling about healthy, happy and, you know, family togetherness? When everybody is actually struggling to pay City Hall? So and we are building new roof, new houses and stuff like that, but still, you're pricing them out, so now you're taxing them out. So I don't like to do that, I'm gonna have, if I have a chance to get in there, I'm gonna have to take department by department. Looking at what to increases and why is the increases happening? And, you know, what are some of the new position that being hold out there? And we need to look at, are these position necessary that, you know, being hired? Because right now, it's crunching time and the money is really hard to earn. And so I'm gonna just take a look department by department, what are the increases, why is the increases? So and then put them together, so there should be some thing in there that are either new or increased. Because right now, what I worry about the most is that we are hiring more people into the city. But at the same time, what are you gonna do three, four, five years from now with these people? You can't lay them off because it's gonna, you you disrupt their family, disrupt their living, disrupt their kid, their education, their healthcare and everything. We're creating more problem here, so in order to do that, let's take a look at every single department and see what are some of the growth? What are some of the things that we can just take away that not really necessary to have or have increase? Because we do know that the acre community is suffering, so we shouldn't be adding more, you know, to their suffering. Because the cost of living and everything else, I don't wanna repeat. But there should not be that much increase in taxes in the community. Because, I mean, who else gonna have any money to live in the city anymore except the wealthy? And maybe developers that that's gonna get their people to come in, so. And that's, you know, a really short answer into it and and regarding to taxes and other thing. I know there's gonna be reason for it and it's gonna be really smooth reason for it. And trust me, I I fell to that. You know, these 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 things about all better life stuff, all fixed up, my road hasn't been fixed. Everything else hasn't been fixed for the past four years. So let's do this right, let's break down the budget and then see where everything's at.
Okay, Mr. Yang, to you.
Yes, thank you for the question and I know the budget is will be a hot button issue for the campaign. However, to me, four percent, it's a bit steep and increase. But with that said, I just want to point out that the budget is not just something that the financial team at the city hall. Which is invented, you know, it is, you know, it is a hard number. For example, the pension assessment increase for the retiree, you know, this past year is one point four million dollars. And then in the health insurance went up about twelve point twelve point seven percent. And then in addition, the charter school tuition for the city, four point nine million dollars. And then and then on top of that, the debt services, you know, we built a new, brand new high school. Almost like I went to the bank and I borrow money from the bank to build a house, I have to pay that debts. So with that said, for me, I just want to point it out that the city of Lowell had been very fiscal responsible. We, the city build the budget on the proposition two and a half. That mean the state and allow the city to tax the resident up to two and a half percent of the assessed value. However, the city of Lowell did not go all the way, while other cities in town, they are voting to override two and a half percent. The city of Lowell, we have about fourteen million in excess of that two and a half position proposition two and a half. So that mean the rating is is better for the city. So if the city need to borrow money, the interest will be cheaper. Similar to, I have a credit card, I have a line of credit a hundred thousand, I'm not gonna max out my hundred thousand line of credit. So I'm using it enough so that my credit score will be good to support my borrowing for other projects. So in addition to this, I I would look at various department, talked about what what need, what we need to cut back. What will be freezing, we're not gonna hide anymore. We look at department by department. As you know, city budget is online, the resident cannot read it, can read about it. And I understand there's a lot of technicality that that normal, including myself, I have to ask the CFO, what does this mean? What does that mean? And that's the thing that our resident does not have the ability to understand. However, I want the resident to call me, six one seven four five nine three thousand. If you have an issue about the taxes, why it go up and all that, which I, someone take me up on it. So we sit down and we go over line by line what it is. And in addition, the front runner city, and this is why the city invests in itself, promoting ourselves. To attract more development into our city. So more development that will come from the front runner city, that will help increase the tax base. Therefore, it's reduce the tax for our resident who live here all their lives. So this is why we do all of this thing as a council to together. So that we reduce lesser burden on the taxes on our resident. I understand in the pain, certain thing we try to do as a city, but at the national level, we have no control. Thank you for the question.
Okay, next question and we'll start with you, Mr. Yang. Since the preliminary election, the term safe injection sites has become a hot topic. Based on some legislation that was proposed at the State House, has been proposed for a couple of years now. Would you support the city opening one, allowing one if the state says it's okay to do so? And if so, would you be okay with it in your district, District Seven?
This is the hot button issues and before I came during my campaigning, canvassing. I have a resident come out to me and say, don't you ever vote for that inject, safe injection, there's no safe injection site. And more likely, it's gonna be dumb on the acre, there's so many things have dumb on the acre. So my concern is this, you know, I understand and I have, I I, you know, I feel for the people who are. You know, who are suffering from ta- drugs abuse and then mental health and all of that. However, safe injection site is not the answer. I would see the money to use it for re- rehab, that will have wraparound services. You know, for people who are addicted to drugs and who have mental illness. So instead of using the fund to to fund that site, using it for a recovering site with the wraparound service. The the issue also, we have to be, we have to think about, you have to fund that and who would fund that? The state will fund it, of course, you started out, the state funded and then a year or two, they pull it. Now, who's gonna fund this? Now it's gonna be burden on our taxpayer, on the city budget. And if you not properly manage that, you know, it would be, it would consider, it would be a disaster. So we don't want that, you know, needle all over the neighborhood. So and that's issue with the budget. One other thing that I I spoke with someone and and I'm told that, you know, federal law does not, this is illegal under the federal law. It's, they told me a crack house law, so if you have safe injection site, it may be legally under the federal law. So we might be having a problem with Trump, you know, come in and raid the raid the city. So this is the reason why I do not support. And more importantly, the reason I don't support is financing, financials, the burden. And also more importantly, where will we put it? So if somebody can tell me where, I will, I will look at it.
Mr. Yang?
I told my friend that if I sound like a politician, tap on my shoulder and then I'll quit. I worked with healthcare for twenty five years and for me to disengage and not support something like that. It's just not me. I believe that every life need support. I believe that everyone that need help should be getting some help. And just because they're addicted to certain, I don't know, drugs or whatnot. And then injected themselves, you know, with these, I guess, drugs or or problem. I think once they're getting into that, then there should be some sort of guidance. I don't like when the council voted and, you know, to to basically not allowing it. Because I don't think none of the council work in healthcare. The same thing also is that within the health department should be consulted as well. I cannot be decided alone, I need to talk with people down, let's say Lowell General, let's say Lowell Health Center, let's say some other healthcare places. What are some of the precaution, you can't, there should be rule and regulation, of course, this is can not just be open. And without safety guard or safeguard in place. So I don't wanna put any fear mongering our people and say Trump coming down here or nothing like that. This is just a little bit, a little bit, a little bit too heavy. But I do support helping people, you know, get the care they need in what way possible. And injection site, basically, you can't just open a site and you go in there and inject yourself. It's not that simple, there's there's guideline, there's people, there's monitoring, there's professional. So there's other other thing involved. But for me, I would consult with a lot of healthcare professional in order to support or not or not support these kind of stuff. But I agree, it's not gonna be in acre. Acre has so much problem right now, that's why I'm here. There, you know, everything else is, let's look at the acre, okay, you know, like, you know, this NIMBY kind of thing is getting out of date and then you got me. So e- either way, I'm here to, you know, to make sure that people get their voices heard. And with injection site, again, you know, I I will support it with all the different system in place. And especially all the guidance from the healthcare professional and not just, you know, counselors that deciding this.
So just to clarify, support it, you would support it, but what if the proposal would be to put it somewhere in your district? Would you then oppose it?
Well, depend on where and also where are you gonna put it? Right now, I'm telling you, we got nothing, we got nothing in the acre, we're you on top of somebody's house? No, 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 I I understand that, you know, we we have to look at this, this is not something that, you know, we'll say, okay. Well, there's a lot right there in the acre and let's put it there, that's not possible. But at the same time, again, if every system's in place, I would. Just because life need to be saved and 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 not to be decided by a very few people. And so this is where I come from and then I will, you know, again, tap me out.
You wanted a moment to?
Yeah, I'm I'm kinda follow up on Brother Sidney, Bone Bone Sidney. He talked about to save lives, you know, by having injection and all that. But what I want to follow up, similar along that line of thinking about saving lives, saving people, helping people. Sidney is on the board of director of LTC, Lowell Tele- Telecommunit- Telemedia Center. And the worker organize want to unionize. And the board director of LTC did not support that. And until right now, before I came, I have someone who reached out and say, would you mention, you know, where we at? For the the contract negotiation with the the union and the and the board of the LTC. Because it seems like she gave me a point that, she gave me a point because she used to work there. So she give me, and she asked me, you know, where 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 we at is our contract negotiations.
I I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm gonna give you an opportunity to bring that up because the question was about safe.
You know, let me, let me, let me.
You you will have a chance to make that point, I promise you.
Yes, when it come up. I I was, again, I was in EMT a while back. And, well, you know, as a Cambodian, you're not that big, so that's why, one of the reason I I quit. One of, one afternoon, we got a call. There was a overdose person right behind the Superior Court. We went there, we couldn't find out, but she was injecting herself and she was not, she was unconscious, she was not breathing. So we tried to revive her, we tried to help her out. And we call the, you know, advanced support come in and trying to find out where the needle was, you know, and then trying to revive the person. We tried so hard to revive thi- this person because she injected herself through in between her toes. So we couldn't find that, but the reason is that it keep in my mind, in my head is that. If there's a place with support, this is a place that this person can go to, something, you know, would have been different. I wouldn't have to be there that afternoon. So, you know, this is something that really, really hard for me when I say that every life matter and it should be. Especially if you're addicted, nobody want to be addicted to drug, nobody wanna poke needle into themselves. So that's why I'm always looking into this, this is not something about a site, it's about deeper than that.
Okay, thank you, all right. So final question and we'll start with you, Mr. Liang. And this is the one that will be slightly different based on your standing today in in politics. Mr. Liang, what is one area where you feel the incumbent? Mr. Yang has completely swung and missed, I'm gonna use the baseball analogy for Clemente Park. He either swung and missed or didn't even step up to the plate in the last council term. Where where has he, where has he been wrong?
It's not about the subject of being wrong, I think for me, it's more like availability. I would love to see him in the neighborhood some more. I would love to see him, you know, in different neighborhood groups. I would love to see him in, you know, different area within the acre community more than out there. I understand he's a vice mayor and he's all over the place. But for me, like I said, I'm running to be District Seven and so I'm gonna be planning to be at District Seven more. You know, so that's, I mean, I, you know, I, he's, like I said, he's, he's doing pretty good job and, you know. But it's just that we need to see him more because there's a lot of more stuffs happening in the community, even where I live. You know, I have to fight every day with all these, you know, everything else that's happening in the acre neighborhood. And just like a resident and and also a community leader, I have my own problem within the community and the neighborhood. And so therefore, and I need, you know, someone that's, you know, available. And also much more in tune into the 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 district than out there, you know, throughout the city. And of course, I do understand that we represent the whole entire city and we need to take care of the entire city. But our baby is acre and Lowell Highland.
Okay, Mr. Yang, I will give you an opportunity to respond. Okay, Mr. Yang, I will give you an opportunity to respond to where, uh, Mr. Yang says you're lacking. But I also wanna ask you, what is one proposal that you've heard from Mr. Yang during the campaign where you think he's way out of the strike zone?
Um, I would not, uh, I, I would not say that he, um, um, he is not off base. However, it's because, uh, he does not have the privilege to information, particularly in the budget. Uh, he's talking about, you know, the, your tax go up, tax go up and stuff like that. You know, I understand because when you heard and you read in the newspaper that a tax had been increased two and a half percent. I run my own business, also in my household, I did budget. So, and I understand that every year, everything going up, inflation going up. As I mentioned earlier regarding the budget, the city is almost like a company. You know, we have employee, you have to pay their health insurance, which go up twelve point seven percent last year and it go, go up more. Um, and number two, you have to talk about, you know, all other, like the retirement of employee who retired. And they, and that we need to take care of that. And also we have a fixed debt service that we need to pay as a city, particularly, uh, in build of the new high school. And I'm very proud, even though when I ran in twenty seventeen, I'm the colleague guy. But it turned out to be beautiful, but the cost overrun killed the city and then it put a dent into the budget. Fortunately, we have some, uh, you know, like free cash at the end of the year. And the city has an account to set aside for rainy fund to offset some of the increase. And then to keep our, to keep our tax rate, uh, at high, at, at a good, uh, good, uh, at a good level so that we as a city can borrow cheaper money to do other project in the city. So it's, it's just that, uh, certain little things, uh, that he, uh, that, that Sidney may not have, you know, privilege to information. Without being on the council, I wouldn't know all the detail. I look at the city website, there's a lot of technical, technical, you know, language that I do not understand. So I can call our CFO and say, hey, what do, what does that mean? You know, like, for example, cherry sheet, what the cherry sheet? They say, oh yeah, it's a, a spreadsheet, but it's a color of the cherry. And so I have to ask that kind of question. And then these are the thing that Sidney may not have, you know. And then, and then that's reason why, when he talked about budget, uh, I feel like, you know, um, uh, we don't detail information while I have that detailed information. I understand that. So every year, we in our household, we put aside X amount of dollar because we know the tax go going up, inflation going up, you know, gradually. And then, then that's to offset of that, that's what, you know.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, no.
Respond to that.
This, this is, I think, uh, one of the clear difference between me and Monatai. He's a business person, I'm a community person. It's two, almost like two different person that people can choose from. Um, I spend my life within, you know, the community. I don't, I know about business, I have a bachelor in business, but I don't do business. But I, uh, I understand, and my work over thirty years is within the community. And he explained it as a business kind of thing. But City Hall is a public entity. The money is the people's money. They're not earning that money, people earn that money and put to that coffin. So therefore, it affects the people. It's just like when he's doing the budget for his family, he's actually taking good care of it. So for me, I want City Hall to take good care of that money that people are really earning hard. Because, you know, every, whether it's cherry sheet or yellow sheet or blue sheet or brown sheet, the money is the people's money and it should be really take good care of. And, you know, of course, when taxes, you know, coming down, it hurts all of us. And that should feel in City Hall. City Hall should feel the pain of the community that works so hard for these money that given to them. So that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, did you want an opportunity to respond to his criticism that you should be out in the community more?
Oh, okay.
And anything else you want. This is the free form part of the game. If you watch this morning, you would.
Yeah, the, out of the community, one of them, and then the, uh, the budget and responsibility. That's the other two, if I could combine that. Um, it's, you know that, uh, as a vice mayor, uh, you go out to different event that representing the city. Uh, as a coun- even though I'm a district counselor, uh, you go to different places that is, that is, that, that representing the city. You know, of if all the, the mayor, the vice mayor can, and if you available, uh, I personally would go because I wanna represent the city. I want the businesses who started here, they have ribbon cutting, I want to welcome them. The same thing with new home, uh, new, new home buyers, you know, starting the new life and people move in. I went to the school, uh, on the, um, on, on the school night, you know, like, um, a parent nights. They, they, they have all the parent come in. Um, the, if the teacher invite me, I went to the Mookland School, I went to the Butler School. I greet the student, I greet the parent and, and, and tell them. So, um, certain meetings that I could not make it due to the conflict of schedule. It's not that I do not want to go, it's just that, like yesterday, right? We have, uh, at the acre, uh, senior center, we have, uh, the city present a plan, one street, many lives. At the same time with another event. So I went to the first event first and then come to the second because I wanna stay longer. So I got there, presented pretty much almost over and I had an opportunity to speak about, you know, the plan, uh, that, uh, working, the city working on, uh, the, the, the traffic engineer working on. Uh, three area acre is one of them. As you can maybe remember, I filed the motion about Broadway, Fletcher Street from Broadway all the way to Pataca Street. People would just race the, up there to get to the Pataca Street as quickly as possible. So there are many crosswalk, the student walk to Mookland School and that's my motion. And the traffic engineer very responsive, looking at all of that together. So these are the thing that, you know, that I, um, I want to share with our viewer. In addition to that, um, I want to, uh, talked about the budget. If you look at the line item, the people, the financial team and the manager, take the, take this seriously because understanding that all of them live in the city. So if the tax go up, I have to pay. Uh, everybody else who are honest, honest, on the team, financial team have to pay too. You know, and for me, uh, I, I, I'm unfortunate enough to have not just my home, but also rental. So I pay extra for that as well and I don't mind because this is to improve, you know, the neighborhood and street. I understand not all of it done at one time, there are work need to be done. But progress have been made so far in the past four year and I'm very proud of it, to be part of it. And I would just ask people to allow me to go back and continue the progress. So if you look at the detailed budget, really detail, each department by department, seven hundred and eighty-six pages this long. And we go line, uh, department by department. So I just want to clarify that the people at the city hall, financial team, take this pain seriously of our resident. And that's why we reinvest, uh, ourselves, promote ourselves to go outside of the normal channel, to bring more development. And that's what we have from runner city, uh, coming to the city of Lowell.
Okay, Mr. Yang.
I think also that, um, for people who's earning ninety-five thousand dollars a year versus forty-five or fifty thousand dollars a year, I think we know where the pain is at. You know, especially with the acre community. Uh, there's no comparisons in, in, in the way of, uh, I, I understand everybody, you know, work and put their job seriously. But at the same time, I'm, I'm just saying that who's protecting the acre community? Uh, all, all, all community and all districts are not the same, their incomes not the same, the numbers very different. Even the health department came out, you know, with this survey that, you know, looking at, at the same time. The community need more support. And I'm not going to City Hall to, to, to be a, a friend of somebody to. I need to make sure that our community understand what's going on, okay? And we also, you know, get a fair share of what's going on with the city. You know, whether it may be the link program, if it's a, you know, front runner or back runner city, I don't know. But we need to make sure that the acre community have a better and maybe, you know, healthier lives, you know, uh, like other district as well.
Yes, um, the budget does not discriminate. The budget is, look at the microscope and then look at all these detailed spending. And it's not like targeted, oh, we, we're gonna tax the acre more and we're gonna tax the Belvedere less. No, it's not, it's, it's does not discriminate and look at the whole entire expenses. And then look at what the city bring in, in the tax revenue and the income. Remember Lowell is fortunate as a gateway city where sixty-two, sixty-three percent of the city budget are coming from the state and the federal. And now at the, at the, at national level, we see all these cuts and we know the hard time is coming. That's why the city official, including myself, all the counselor and the manager and the city team, go out, try to recruit more businesses, development to our city to offset that. So I just want to kind of, um, point that out, the budget does not discriminate, oh, we tax more neighborhood, uh, more.
Yeah, I, I also don't want to debate whether it's the gun or the people who kill people. So this is not it. Um, so, uh, if, if that, uh, what people see, they would choose one of us. So I think that would put that to rest.
Okay, and before wrapping up, did you want an, an opportunity to respond to the thing about the Lowell telemedia that Mr. Yang brought up?
Yeah, I mean, um, Monatai's been sitting on many boards, uh, also many, um, organization, nonprofit or otherwise. In each nonprofit or each board, there's committee that's working on it. So if you belong to that committee, you working on that committee. I, even though I'm the vice president of the board, I'm not part of the committee who negotiating this union, uh, uh, contract. So therefore, people keep saying to me that, oh, Sidney, um, go help them, get it done before the election. Get it done before the primary, get it done before November. I feel like there, you're using me to, I don't know, to gain something. But honestly, the person or the group of people that's working on it, it's, uh, Mr. McCoon, that's a ED. And also the president and maybe, uh, two other members of the board that's actually working on it. They're moving it, but, uh, basically, m- maybe it's slowly just because there's some negotiating going on. I think that, uh, we an outsider looking at this, a little bit frustrating. But I think that, uh, talk to the staff themselves, talk to the right person. And using me as something, I, I don't know what is, but like I said, if you on a board of, you know, you would know that this committee is handling this problem or this issues. So who am I to jump in there? But all I can say is that progress has been made. They've been meeting a couple of Fridays, uh, you know, a, a month to talk about the issues and it's been moving forward. There's other issues in there that they're working on, you know, but that's for them to say, okay, this Friday, we're gonna work on this. So they're moving forward already. It's the people who's outside thinking, oh, it's not moving and Sidney having the answer. If I had the answer, I would have done this a long time ago. I, you know, this thing was through to us, you know, on a lap, we are like, I didn't know about union negotiation. So we have to learn it, boom, 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 boom. But again, this committee that's working on this subject. And I think if you want to talk to Eric Sack, that's the president of the board, or Mr. Adam McCoon, who's a ED of LTC. And I think you would find the number or just walk over there and make an appointment and talk with him and, and in the group. They'll give you the right information and not the information out there. Because they're the one who's dealing, you know, working between the staff and that group. So I'm not part of that group, but at the same time, I do have some information. But I can't disclose the information when it's ongoing. While also I am not the spokesperson, you know, for that because it is a negotiating that's ongoing. So it, it's a little bit complicated for me to just explain, but I think they're just using me to, you know, for whatever reason.
If, if, if I may just follow up, I, I just want you to know that this is not try to put you down or politics or anything. But, uh, that's a former employee, she reached out and she asked, she know that I'm gonna be on debate. And to me, it's, if I'm a vice president on the board, I need to know the answer. So I can't just say, oh, uh, somebody else has the answer. No, it's been over two years and they, um, uh, to me, uh, as the vice president of the board, uh, it talked about accountability, transparency, uh, particularly people who are depend on LTC, uh, to, uh, get information, to broadcast and to staff who they need to, uh, to have, uh, s- a support of the management. And this is why it's so critical. Now you want to be on the council and then you can say the same thing, oh, it's somebody else negotiating. Are you gonna say that or?
So this has been planned, so, uh, okay. Uh, I guess, uh, one thing that I won't do is that, um, break whatever rules they make. Which mean the negotiation between them and the negotiation between the staff and the board. And I'm not gonna be speaking because of political stuff. I'm not gonna say on their behalf because somebody want me to say something. Because rules are rule, you should buy, abide by the rule that you made between the, uh, Team A and Team B. So negotiation is working, negotiation is ongoing. This is the staff and also, and, uh, I guess the, the union team, they're working together on this. And so therefore, it's not my place, I don't care who say what. My place to, to spread it out there because people's life, people's earning are depending on it and they're negotiating. And this is, I think it's, it's not out of the realm of, uh, normal, um, union negotiation. If I, if I, you know, remember correctly. Uh, and I think it's working, even though I don't think it's longer than usual, but I think it's just normal for the first contract. Now, I'm not a union specialist, but again, I'm for the union. You know, I, if I have people, you know, I, I don't like people who's fight alone. Especially when you're the underdog, you need support, you need the help. So I did what I did, which mean that, uh, at this point, like, again, I will not break the rules of the committee or the agreement between two parties. Mr. Eric Sack and also Adam McCoon is the person that anybody who want to know, go speak about. Because I would break my rule as a responsible board member of LTC to say something that I'm not allowed to say because I'm just a vice president. Because the committee has its rule, the committee has their precedent and within that committee to work with the other group. And also, the group between the staff, I'm not speaking on behalf of the staff. The staff might not allow me to speak one on their behalf. And so therefore, I would defer that to the right person so that it's not the wrong information being give out publicly, you know, to people out there that's listening, so.
I'm gonna let that be the last word, it's clear there's a difference of opinion here on, on that and many of the other issues as well. So here's your opportunity to make your closing statement. I might, I believe this will be your last forum and last chance to address the voters in some type of a media format. So, uh, we start with you, Mr. Yang.
Uh, thank you again Ted, and thank you for, um, for this opportunity to, uh, to, to let the voter know who I am, where I stand on issues. We had a good, uh, lively discussion. Um, and I'm very honored to serve as a counselor for District Seven, including the acre for the past four year. We made lots of progress in the area of affordable housing, infrastructure, and then in the community safety and the quality of life. And then also, we also, uh, make progress. I personally involved with the help of my colleagues to create a, uh, the veteran service to improve hometown hero banners, uh, to respect and to honor our veteran and our senior. And also I work with my co- uh, colleagues to, uh, to also deal, do with the economic development as part of, I mentioned earlier, a number of businesses that open up. And as a, a vice mayor and a city counselor, I go participate and welcome them, offered our support because their success is a su- success of our city. Also econo- uh, education, in the education period. Um, we uh, we were given uh, the the information that um, the net school spending by our s- uh, solid, uh, by our. Our CFO that we eh, we meet and exceed the net school spending. In addition, the city spend about uh. For four hundred million dollars to improve many uh, infrastructure and 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 um, other. Necessary heating and all of that in in different uh, middle school uh, uh, throughout the city. And then environmental stewardship and then one of the thing that I'm proud of, along with my colleague that the city create a sustainability. Um, department and we have an excellent superstar uh, by the name of Kathy Moses, she is the director of sustainability. And this is why the city of Lowell had been chosen to be front runner city as part of the uh, UN. Of uh, Sustainability Development Goal Number Eleven. And I thank you and uh, my family and I respectfully ask for your vote November fourth. So you can send me back to continue the progress that we have made together for the Acre and for the entire city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mister Yen, Mister Liang, your closing statement.
Thank you Teddy, um, thank you to your listener and uh, thank you for the opportunity both to uh, talk a little about about the differences between us. Um, for those out there, um. I'm just a normal person, um, I'm not a politician, my word might come out a little bit differently. Um, again, if I'm ever become a smooth talker like a politician, then you can tap me out, I do not want to do that. Um, when that time come, you should ask, why do you start in the first place? You can ask me, why did you enter the race in the first place? So I live in the Acre for so many years and the improvement hasn't really changed. And we have been really overlooked for so many years. But this doesn't mean that I have all the answers. I have the pain like everybody else that's in the Acre, that's why I'm running. Uh. I'm ready to bring change to the people of the Acre and the Highland neighborhood. I will work with you and your families and different partners in our city to improve the quality of life for your children, your family. And your neighbors. Economic growth should benefit all residents, not just the rich, not just other neighborhoods, the Acre neighborhood as well. Your tax dollar allocate thoughtfully, strategically and transparently, no jargons. The city's spending and budgeting should reflect the daily experience and the needs of the residents. I think we can understand that today. Whether born at a local hospital or elsewhere, healing remain essential. We need access to affordable, culturally sensitive, preventive and early treatment health services. Along with health promotion opportunity. Through collaboration across all sectors. Investment in mu- multicultural bilingual program also crucial. I love this community and I look forward serving the city that has provided my family and me. With a place to live, to learn and to grow. My team and I, Sydney Liang, asking for your support and your vote on Tuesday, November fourth. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you to both of you for uh, an interesting and in-depth discussion on a number of issues and uh. Congratulations to both of you on a well-run campaign, the residents of the Acre District, District Seven have a, have a choice in front of them and uh, one of you will be representing them going forward in January. Of twenty twenty-six, so thank you so much and thank all of you for tuning in as well. Hopefully you got a little bit more information. About these candidates and where they stand and how they would represent you going forward. This was, will be our final debate. Of the election season, we've had a bunch of them and uh, now it's time for you to do your job. The candidates have done theirs, you need to do yours. Get on out there and vote, watch as many of the forums, read as many of the stories as you can, learn about where they stand on the issues if you haven't already voted. And then make an informed decision on Tuesday, November fourth, or you still have another day of early voting if you would like, but either way. The candidates have worked hard and they deserve that much. I do want to wrap up by reminding everybody that. On election night, when those polls close, or actually one hour before they close at seven PM on November fourth. We will go live with our annual election show here, we've got the most experienced election team around here in the city of Lowell. Couple of former city councils will be joining us, a former candidate for city council and of course, Jerry Nutter and I. Will be here hosting throughout the course of the evening, we'll have the former elections director here with us as well and our numbers guy, Ace of Stutz. So. From seven o'clock until the polls close at eight PM, we'll be telling you the, about the day's events, how the turnout is going, how the election day itself is going. And then at eight o'clock, when the results start getting printed at the various precincts and polling locations. We'll have people at all of them to send us the numbers and we'll be reporting the numbers for you as well, so you can get a sense of how the election is going. And of course, following the numbers, once we know what they are, we'll have some uh, some analysis. And discussion about what it means going forward for the city of Lowell. So tune in. Tuesday night, November fourth, seven PM, right through, uh, well, until the story is told on insideLowell.com or on our YouTube channel. Uh, with that, we say thank you for tuning into this Inside View. Until the next time, everybody stay safe and we will see you on the other side.